All right, we will, that one says it's after seven. We will call the meeting to order. If you'd please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. And Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Excused. All right, we will move to appointments this evening. We have the 2018-2020 poet laureate. City council to confirm the appointment of Susan Landgraf as Auburn's 2018-2020 poet laureate. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve the 2018-2020 poet laureate.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Brown.
Second.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Baggett, would you like to?
Yes.
Make any comments?
We have an appointment tonight of Susan Landgraf as Auburn's 2018-2020 poet laureate.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Are there any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Susan Landgraf being appointed as the City of Auburn poet laureate for 2018-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right, do we have any agenda modifications, Sean?
No, Your Honor.
All right, we will move to public hearings. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one is a public hearing for the right-of-way vacation V1-17. City council to conduct a public hearing in consideration of right-of-way vacation number Do we have a staff report tonight? No staff report tonight. All right, so I will declare the public hearing for right-of-way vacation V1-17 open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to that issue? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Virginia Howgan, 2503 R Street, Southeast, Auburn. This right-of-way, someone called me the other day and mentioned it, and I just was not informed, couldn't answer any questions, and I'm trying to understand where this vacation is. Are we talking near the middle of town, or are we talking out on the south end of town? I'm trying to get, if someone can sort of locate it, and I'm just hoping for a presentation that would give me an idea of where the vacation is.
The vacation is located in the vicinity of 1412 Third Street Southeast, specifically the south 50 feet of the north, 331 feet of the west, 60 feet of Lot 33, East Auburn Acres addition to Auburn. So it's on, it's 1412 Third Street Southeast is the portion that is being vacated for right-of-way.
Okay, can someone tell me why it's being vacated? I have the packet here, but I haven't had a chance to read it.
Ingrid, would you like to speak to it?
So at last week's study session, there was a presentation given to the council concerning this vacation. The vacation is located basically south of Third Street Southeast between M and R Streets Southeast, along a portion of what was once identified as the Fourth Street Corridor many years ago, when the city removed the Fourth Street Corridor from its comprehensive plan and the Transportation Improvement Program. Basically, we identified that we did not need that road connection between M and R Street along the Fourth Street Corridor, just immediately north of SR 18. So this is being vacated because it's an unused, unopened right-of-way, and there is actually a portion of a building actually built on this right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the public hearing for the right-of-way Hearing none, we will close the public hearing for right-of-way vacation V1-17. And next is a public hearing for franchise agreement number 17-22. City council to conduct a public hearing in consideration of franchise agreement number 17-22 for Olympic Pipeline Company LLC. And Ingrid, is there any need for a staff presentation?
It was discussed last week.
Last week at the study session. All right. Excuse me. I will open the public hearing for franchise agreement number 17-22. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue for the public hearing? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Virginia Howgan, 2503 R Street, Southeast, Auburn. I'm not sure that I'm right, but I believe Olympic LLC is the one who had a pipeline up way north, and I think a couple of guys were killed, somebody had cigarettes, who threw the match into the river, there was a leak. Thank you. And I was horrified, but shortly after that, I discovered that we had a pipeline that was coming up on the West Hill, and I had friends who lived up there, and it was kind of by mistake that I noticed it. And when I questioned someone at City Hall, our director of Public Works at the time didn't even know it existed, which was a shock to me. But then later on, we had people from up in that area come to a council meeting, and they were alarmed that they had a pipeline very close to their front doors, and then no one from the city had ever gone to them and talked to them about it. And it's my feeling that if a former council member had a gas explosion near his home that left a crater, and we discussed it several months ago, if people were killed from a pipeline explosion, that maybe our council needs to really think about what we got in Auburn. Thank you.
Ingrid, would you like to address?
So the UTC, the Utilities Transportation Commission, actually regulates the safety for pipelines such as these. Olympic Pipeline has actually been in the city for several years. This is basically a new franchise because their existing one is actually expiring. So it's basically another five-year renewal.
Okay. And it is the UTC that identifies and controls the safety of these?
Yeah, and federal regulations that oversee pipeline safety as well as testing and how regularly they need to go out and inspect the lines.
Excellent, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak on the public hearing for franchise agreement 17-22? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will move on to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided. And I believe, Daniel Roy, you are first on the, you are first up tonight to speak.
I got part of what you let me know to say about, you know, there's something going on about.
Please, Mr. Roy. Mr. Roy. Please give your name and address for the record before you begin.
Which one, where this is located?
No, your name and your address for the record.
Post office, Box 136, Rincon, Washington, 8057. That's my postal office over in Rincon, you know. So I live one by the hatch, we're one mile north, and it was a small trailer, my brother's friends, seven acre land, you know, they got three or four custom homes, you know. So I, well, doing part-time work over in Kent, riding city buses and riding bicycles every day, just about like that. So I noticed something in the Auburn area, there was something that was not right, they were having all those statues around the area, and it's not doing nothing, and just like this one right there, 12-foot crow up there, 12 feet high up like that, and then $125,000 for that, it's not doing anything, like nothing. They can use it for like the ray of hope and charity, they can help everywhere, make use of the money with it, not just throwing away cash, it's not doing nothing. That's why I stopped, let the city know, the council, right? And I don't know how you're gonna get this not to be put there, and I noticed all these other statues around, and if they take them and throw it out for scrap metal, you know, and use that money to help people out with like charity or ray of hope or something like that, I got the paper, everybody got the card, and I put over there the ray of hope. If I first went time, and I got this many cards there, like right there, and hand out, you know, yeah, right. So I don't know if they can, if they have the right to, well, you can have, just not to be put there, you know, and all this money there, $125,000, you know, and then I just got this out of the Auburn report, made a copy of it, you know, right. So I don't know how it's gonna go, you know, and then the city council's about, somebody has something to do about that crow there, it's not doing out, you know, yeah. People sit out, and it's not the right thing to do, and it's not doing nothing, it's not doing, you know, it's like a zero, you know, throwing out cash, but it's not doing any work at all. You know, it's not the right thing to do, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Well, I can stop by when I can, you know, if I have some other things to say that they want to say, that's right, just let you know, right? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Zimmerman, 33029, 46th Place South, Auburn. When I was at the Citizens Academy, the building department was proud of the fact that they were the most accommodating building department in the area. And the mayor, in her weekly reports, has said quite a few times that all how compassionate they are in the department. And I have found none of that. All I have found is a callous disregard for the laws of the state of Washington and the code, and that are supposed to protect the property, the health, and the lives of the state of Washington. Now, when I speak to friends about this and casual acquaintances occasionally, all of them come to the same, well, almost all of them come to the same conclusion. They say they had to have been paid off. When I speak to professionals, code people, they are dumbfounded. They tell me, go to code enforcement. And I tell them, that's the problem. I have gone to code enforcement. I've been talking to code enforcement for seven or eight years now. This is just absolutely beyond my comprehension. We've got this public duty doctrine business where they accommodate errors and omissions, and I can understand why you have that. You can't have everybody with a problem with a building come into the city and trying to blame them. But what we're seeing is a callous, total disregard and denial the code that applies even exists. I mean, it's just beyond comprehension. This is malfeasance, this isn't a minor error. Now, I sent you guys all a list of code violations that I have sent to that department numerous times, and they say they have been unable to find a violation. Okay, now, the most obvious one is the part that says about safety for retaining wall. It has to be 1.5 times the safety of a normal wall. Of course, they deny there's anything to be required, but this 1.5 factor, what the code says, it says you have four feet of fill on one side and zero on the other, that requires a 1.5 safety factor. Now, four feet high, you've got dirt piled up against this wall, okay? Oops, I missed the microphone. Four feet high, you've got that much dirt right there piled on one side of that wall. On the other side, you've got that much. And your inspectors, in several trips to the site, were unable to identify that violation. Now, the mayor says that she wants to make Auburn a better place, okay? And I agree, Auburn should be a better place. But her inability or unwillingness to properly evaluate and supervise the employees in her administration is just absolutely outrageous. Sorry, I ran out of time, so I'm sure you can understand that I will probably continue in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final time, anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Virginia Howgan, 2503 R Street, Southeast, Auburn. The third time is not always the charm. Nobody likes a juicy headline in the local newspaper more than I do. On the other hand, nobody hates a juicy headline in the Auburn paper more than I do. Being a politician can be nasty, being a politician can be a nasty endeavor. It can also be enlightening, frustrating, exhilarating, and at times dangerous. That we have a council member who took a seat on the Auburn City Council, who knew full well what the job entailed, and has been willing to do the job with courage and honesty, often putting the well-being of taxpayers ahead of her own ego, is something I and many people in this community appreciate. Thank you for your service, Councilmember Wales. In the meantime, mind your manners.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, we will move on to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks, and may give their recommendation to the city council if any. And tonight, for finance, we have Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the finance committee met, and we found 183 claims, vouchers, and four wire transfers dated March 19th, 2018, in the amount of approximately $5 million. Claims, vouchers are paid bills, wire transfers are money transferred electronically, usually to another government agency like Social Security or state retirement. Payroll vouchers, March 1st through March 14th totaled a little over $2 million. And that would conclude the report.
Thank you. The roads committee, ad hoc committee, Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. We haven't met recently, but we're still reviewing the information and data that was provided by Ingrid and her staff, and we're setting up additional meetings, including one about two weeks from now, and we'll be meeting on a regular basis after that.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that the council consider and approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Yes, we have the minutes of two of the meetings, the minutes of March 5th, 2018, a regular city council meeting, the minutes of January 8th, 2018, the city council study session, and the claims vouchers and the payroll vouchers that Councilmember Brown went through.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business, we have no new business, so we will move on to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance number 6671, ordinance of the city council of the City of Auburn, Washington, vacating real property intended for right-of-way purposes located at 1412 Third Street Southeast within the City of Auburn, Washington.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
I move for the acceptance of ordinance number 6671.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Pelosi.
I'll second, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
This was discussed at our last study session. This property was initially acquired at no cost to the city in 1956. It has no real value to the city at this time, and by taking it off our books, it lessens the city's liability and it lessens our likelihood of upkeep of the property. So I would think this is a good transmittal.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I have a question. I wasn't here for, when you did the study session, so I wasn't sure what the intent was to, of using this property. Will it eventually be used as a through road?
So we are vacating the right-of-way, it's not for us to utilize, we are vacating it and giving it back to the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 6671, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5343, a resolution of the city council of the City of Auburn, Washington, approving the 2018 stormwater management program plan and authorizing the mayor to include a copy of the program plan in the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Western Washington Phase 2 Municipal Stormwater Permit Annual Report for 2017 to the Washington State Department of Ecology.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 5343.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi.
Now, the City of Auburn was issued a municipal stormwater permit by the Washington State Department of Ecology in compliance with provisions of the State of Washington Water Pollution Control Law and Federal Water Pollution Control Act brought about by the Clean Water Act. Requirements of the permit include the development and annual update of a stormwater management plan, which describes the actions and activities to be implemented by the city in order to reduce the charges, pardon me, reduce the discharge of pollutants.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution number 5343, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5353, a resolution of the city council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the interlocal agreement with Lake Haven Water and Sewer District for the purposes of modifying the Sewer District Sanitary Sewer Service area.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move the adoption of Resolution 5353.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Mayor, the boundary between the City of Auburn and Lake Haven Water and Sewer District was most recently modified in 2005 by Amendment Number One to the interlocal agreement, which adds parcels involved in the Jovita Heights development to Auburn Sewer Service area. Sewer extensions that were built as part of that development with 56th Avenue Southeast are adjacent to and able to serve the 19 additional parcels that, at the time, remained within the Lake Haven Service area.
Thank you. Are there any comments? All those in favor of Resolution number 5353, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5358, a resolution of the city council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Washington State Heritage Capital Fund, railroads, waterfowl, field trips, and family outings, and authorizing the mayor to execute necessary contracts to accept said funds.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 5358.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is really a great day for the City of Auburn and our great museum, White River Valley Museum. I was a, before I came on the council, I was a board member there for five and a half years. This grant of $494,000 for the remodel of the White River Valley Museum garage into a classroom gathering space for students, as well as the development of an outdoor plaza area located to the north of the museum garage in Lesko Park.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Holman.
I couldn't vote against something that accepts free money and promotes field trips and family outings.
And waterfowl and railroads.
Oh, yeah.
All right, all those in favor of Resolution number 5358, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right, we will move on to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, I attended the Emergency Management Advisory Committee on behalf of the city, and basically what we went through, we went through all of the grant money that was available, starting with FY15, and working our way up to the current FY17, which they are waiting for their contract status, and they're waiting for receipt of the contract itself. Like many things in the county, we really have a few things that are usually delayed because of a lot of other red tape and other things, but nonetheless, as soon as we get the '17 award contract, we will then move forward. We have spent all of the, except $1, of the FY15 projects. What these are, these are things that involve grant money that is provided for all various different kinds of elements of emergency management, including structural collapse, equipment, fusion centers, cultural competency workshops, community-based preparedness, and Zone 1 and 3 coordination. This is preparatory to the event that we would have a disaster or a real emergency in the King County area. And basically, part of that committee, they suggested that we begin training our businesses in the city, which we have already done here in our city. And I think that we have had a meeting before with our Safe Auburn for Every Resident, which is basically working together to build a safer Auburn, and I think I reported on that maybe a week or two ago. What I'd like to see, and I will be touching base with our police and also with the Office of our Emergency Management, Jerry Thorson, to see if we can kind of meld or merge these together, so instead of just talking about the security or safety of the businesses, we also consider emergency management as part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. Several of us council members are on the Association of Washington Cities Committees. And we have, last month, we finalized our 2018 federal legislative priorities. A few of the priorities are ensure safe communities, maintain community development funding, and this is talking to the federal government. Fund key housing opioid addiction programs, effective governance, and federal budget adoption. Respect state marijuana legislation. And then there's a large topic called invest in infrastructure, and I'll read one of them because it's kind of what I have been involved with several years now. Safety transportation of hazardous materials with a more robust of hazardous materials with a more robust tanker design for volatile cargo such as oil that comes out of North Dakota, comes right up our tracks half a block away. Reduce, and we're pushing real hard to reduce rail speeds through cities and towns. And the other thing is, a couple of us are on the Valley Regional Fire Authority Governance Board. And at our last meeting, we had a presentation from the Valley Professional Firefighters from Local 1352. And they had three issues that they're, they are, they want to talk to the governance board and the administrator. Increase staffing by three fighter, fighters per shift. Collaboration during promotional and entry-level firefighter interviews. And merge with the fire department that is best for all stakeholders within the Valley Regional Fire Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
Yes, I'm, as with our cities, a member of the National League of Cities, and I'm on three boards. I'm on the Hilo Executive Board, that's Hispanic elective legislative officials. And then I'm also on the WIMI, WIMIC, is the Women's Government Local Electives. And I'm also on the Public and Safety Committee. And all of them, at each committee that I went to, the issues and the topics that they were talking about is safety and resilience. Safety and resilience had to do with the three historical hurricanes that hit some of our cities, and wildfires that happened in the west side, California, and the Washington and Oregon area. They, we had the Texan mayor talk about how there's still, some of the cities in Texas are out of electricity. The mayor from Puerto Rico also talked a lot about how part of their city are still without electric power and running water and stuff like that. The mayor from California spoke about how they lost practically almost a whole city due to the fires and everything, and due to a lot of the floodings and the heavy rains that they had afterwards. So that was some of the topics that they talked about. They talked about the opions. Joel Navarro, he is a fire chief from the city of Tampi and also a councilmember. His whole region has really, they're really fighting against this opium epidemic. They made a video, and I gave Dana, because I would like Joe to come to, Joel, to come to our city and talk about what they're doing, because they're basically doing what the One Table is doing as well. But they have done a nation, they've done a video, and they have all the first responders, they have the fire department, the police department, the counselors, the hospitals, and they're all doing a video, and they're out trying to reach the public to do more. They also talked about gun violence. We talked about, in the women's group, we talked about the immigration, the DACA, and the STEM. Because on March 5th, the president took away the Dreamers Act, and these, these kids no longer qualify for that. And we talked about sexual harassment, the Me Too movement. And there was, in that room of 200 women, there was a lot of a Me Too stories, and young, young women talking about the Me Too that has affected their lives. We talked about the census. Arturo Vargas, the executive director of the United States Census Bureau, he talked about how the census is going to be changing. The president has taken away billions of dollars for census to be hired and go door-to-door and do the census. They're going to start doing the census by, by the internet. You're going to have to go to the internet, download the form, and fill it out that way. But right now, they're holding off, because they're waiting for the one little statement that Congress right now is debating on putting a little statement of saying, are you a United States citizen, yes or no? That should be concluded by the end of this month. So Arturo would like to come to our city also and share about how this whole census thing is going to change our cities. He also asked that every city should be on a LUCA, is a, is a LUCA, is a program that the city should be under, where you have every single household address. That's a way that they're going to be able to know if that household filled out their census or not. And if they didn't, then they're going to come and hand-deliver the census to the individual. So that, I had a wonderful time. Went to, from seven o'clock in the morning until around six o'clock in the evening. I went to meetings, breakfast meetings, lunch meetings, dinner meetings in between. And John Holman, I heard that in your tier, where you were supposed to have Doug do the presentation, that Doug did an excellent job. I heard that from a lot of people that know that I come from the city. And so kudos to your, the presentation that Doug did for, for you.
Kudos to Doug.
Yeah, it was very well done. I also met this lady, Nelda Velacquez. She was the first Hispanic Puerto Rican woman to be elected to the U.S. House Representative. She received the Edward R. Robel Legacy Award. And that has to do with her championing on working hard for economic development, community health, and the environment, combat crime, work abuse, and secure access to affordable housing, equity, education, and healthcare for the New York City families. And I had never seen a room full of Congress representative in that, in that room. There was over 580 people in this gala, and it was very well represented, mainly Latinos. And I met our Speaker of the House. I got the opportunity to go and talk with her, and she really is, I, I had a different opinion of her by seeing her on TV, but meeting her, she's a really nice lady. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Brown.
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
It's not even extra time, right?
Oh, you're gonna, you're gonna pull the, the Councilmember Pelosi.
I, um, he's a good teacher.
I see.
I owe the yield.
On March 7th, I attended the Affordable Housing Advisory Board Meeting, of which I am a member, held in Olympia at the Department of Commerce this quarter. And the agenda included updates related to the current legislative session, update on the GMA, and also on buildable lands. Now, back in 2017, under 2017-2019 by Ahab Budget, the William D. Ruckaus Center of Washington, Washington University, was provided $600,000 in general funds from the legislature to collaborate with groups and organizations to create what's called Roadmap to Washington's Future. As we continue to grow and continue to expand, you know, we've, we are identified as a key growth area, a tremendous growth area. We're also identified as the second smallest state on the West Coast. So we have some challenges ahead of us. Their chart on this roadmap is to identify areas of agreement and ways to adopt Washington's growth management framework, statutes, institutions, and policies to meet our future challenges and our robust forecasted growth, which is going to continue through 2040, as we know. Joe Tovar, sorry, Joe Tovar from the Ruckaus Center, provided the Ahab Committee with a update. It was a great slideshow and information. Joe was the person who was instrumental in establishing the 1990 Washington Growth Management Act. And now he is also the program manager for looking at how we do the collaboration on the roadmap. Now, this roadmap is going to examine parts of GMA, parts, the parts of GMA that are working well, and which parts need improvement. And it's a major undertaking, and it's going to take another, through the middle of 2019 before it is completed. On the legislative side, it's interesting, we met the same day that the legislature was supposed to wrap up, and they actually did wrap up on time this year. So I'll just highlight just a few things that happened this year in the legislature. So on the capital budget, we know that the capital budget was passed, finally, in a total of $106.8 million was earmarked for the Housing Trust Fund. Housing Trust Fund provides homes for families with children, seniors, veterans, and people with disabilities, farm workers, and others. It also helps families with low income become first-time homebuyers. And the legislature also earmarked $10 million in housing preservation funds, of which the city of Auburn was a key component of that initiative to try and get that passed through the, through the legislature. $10 million is not a lot of money, but it's a good start. And we're looking forward to the more future dollars to go into that part of the Housing Trust Fund. House Bill 1570 also was passed, and this increases the, the fees for statewide and expands types of housing providers eligible, eligible to be funding through vouchers funded by the document recording fee. Now, the document recording fee has been kind of a, a hot target over the past few years. And finally, the legislature's increased that, that document fee, which will provide additional services, good outreach, and rental assistance, as well as permanent supportive housing services. And last, last two ones, another issue was the public lands surplus, and it's House Bill 2382. And this bill directs state agencies to create an inventory of underutilized surplus and surplus property that can be used for a public and nonprofit entity to seek and to buy the land, to develop the land for affordable housing. This, again, through a number of the organizations that went to Olympia, was pushed very hard through the legislature this year, and we're glad to see that it's passed and it was sent to the governor's desk for signature. Then lastly, the city of Auburn, I guess about a year and a half ago, maybe, we passed a, an ordinance related to source of income discrimination. And source of income discrimination is pretty widespread throughout the entire region, actually throughout the entire country. And our ordinance prohibits landlords from disqualifying folks, basically just because of what their income source is. So, for example, social security, or supplemental social security, or anything like similar to that. The state legislature passed House Bill 2578, which mirrors what the city of Auburn and other cities have done, related to the source of income issue. And this bill now prohibits landlords from discriminating against an otherwise eligible applicant or tenant based solely on the source of income. So we now have a, a law in the state of Washington that's going to facilitate many low-income people, many people who have just social security as their, their sole provider for their, their livelihood, and now they're having an opportunity to hopefully secure and maintain housing. That's my report.
Thank you. On Tuesday, March 6th, I had a lot of fun attending North Taps Middle School, speaking to Ms. Olson's, two of her classes that had been learning about federal and state government. And I was there to provide contrast and comparison between local governments, and got to share, of course, the, the three separate branches of government that we have, just like the state and the federal levels do, with the executive, legislative, and judicial. And they were, they were very enthusiastic questioners. They had all kinds of questions about what is it required to be on, on the council or as mayor? Do I love my job, which the answer to that is always yes? And how many hours do we work? What type of issues do we get involved with? And it was, it was quite, quite a fun time to actually have that many young people asking so many questions about our local government. And thank you to the teachers out there who still teach civics to our students, because I think that's something that's sorely missing with a lot of people nowadays, that they just don't have a basic understanding of how government works. And I am most appreciative when teachers are willing to go through that process. On Thursday, March 8th, along with several members of our council, we were at the 46th Annual Economic Development Council's Economic Forecasting Conference. And I had the good fortune of chairing that committee this year. We had roughly 750 attendees from all types of businesses, and governments, and philanthropic organizations from throughout the Puget Sound region. We always hear from economists that will share the world vision, the state's vision, the, and our local Puget Sound region, and always spot-on, wouldn't you say, Councilmember Holman?
Has been for the eight years I've attended.
Typically been very good. I also had the good fortune of being on a mayor's panel that Monique Ming-Lavin from Cairo was facilitating, along with the mayors from Kirkland and from Everett. And, oh, by the way, it was all three female mayors, talking about economic development, and what do we do outside the city of Seattle that sets us apart, but also what do we do to work together to ensure that the region is thriving. So that was, that was a lot of fun. And perhaps for me, the highlight of the day was towards the end of the day, Councilmember Holman actually captured the photo. But Tom Skerritt, the actor, was one of the final panelists, talking about his communications company and the movie industry in the state of Washington, and how we should be focusing more attention on that. And I went to shake his hand, and he leaned over and gave me a kiss on the cheek. So that was, had to be one of the highlights of my day. And then a few other things. On March 11th, on Sunday, Deputy Mayor Baggett and I attended the groundbreaking ceremony at Lesko Community Campus for the Vietnam War Memorial that Lon and Alan Jones and, and former mayor Pete Lewis have been co-chairing. And we were excited for the groundbreaking and the opportunity that will, that will be built from the ground to give veterans and their families a place to go and to remember, to mourn, and to heal. And I believe the memorial will be done by, around the end of May, Darrell, is that?
Hopefully by Memorial Weekend.
By Memorial Weekend, which would be very, very appropriate. And let's see, here we go. Also, on Friday, well, no, on Wednesday, the 14th, was National School Walkout Day. And all of our high schools in Auburn had students who, either with parental permission or without parental permission, walked out of their high schools at roughly 10:45 and gathered here at City Hall. Their, their goal was because of the shooting at Parkland just a month prior. And they came out specifically to ask for more gun control. And we had a conversation about the fact that there are many, many responsible gun owners in this country. And to remove the rights of gun owners that are responsible seems to be a non-starter. But we could agree on the issue of behavioral health, and how we need to be focusing our efforts upstream so that we never come to the point of where someone with a behavioral health issue has a choice of picking up a gun and harming people. And so I was, I was encouraged by their agreement on those topics. And we are going to be putting together a committee of students from all four of our high schools to talk about this issue, and how we best address the needs and concerns of these students with our state legislature, and perhaps with our, with our federal electeds. And so I am looking forward to how we begin on that journey with the students and council. I'm sure I'm going to be pulling some of you into that as well, to help with that conversation. So please consider when I, when I ask you to be involved in it. It's going to be very, very important. And then on Saturday evening, we had the Lions Club And then on Saturday evening, we had the Lions Club Auction. Again, Deputy Mayor Baggett was there, and Councilmember DeCoursey. Always a fun time getting together to celebrate what the Auburn Noon Lions do in our community, which is to provide sight and hearing for those in need. And I'm not sure how much money you raised. I don't think you've had a meeting yet.
We haven't had the tally yet.
But it, it looked to be a successful evening. And then earlier today, we had the Elected Strategy Session for One Table, which is a committee that Executive Constantine, Seattle Mayor Durkin, and myself convened. And today was, as I mentioned, the Elected Strategy. We also heard from Speaker of the House Frank Chop and Senate Majority Leader Nelson on exactly what you talked about, Councilmember DeCoursey, the bills that were passed in the state legislature just this past session in order to assist the needs for affordable housing. And the One Table goal is to be very bold in how do we prevent homelessness. There are other organizations, including All Home, that is tasked with the crisis situation. But we are looking at how are we going to prevent homelessness to begin with. And so I am looking forward to the recommendations that are coming out of the subcommittees on One Table, and we will be reporting back to you when we receive that report out. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any need for an executive or closed session this evening?
I do not believe so, Your Honor.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.